Like the legions.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the consent agenda items in front of us. Well, first, let's approve the agenda. Any changes or anything to the agenda?
We have one addition and it should be put in front of you, Mr. Chair. It's approve a liquor application for consumption and display, which is the old setup way, I think. That's permits request submitted by Jeff Oda of the Twisted Oaks Barn Center. Unless we have further questions, that's enough of an explanation.
Yeah, and just adding to the consent agenda if you could.
Item E fourteen, that would be.
Right. Okay, we'll add that item, which is in front of us, to the consent agenda. So at this point, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Notch moves to approve the agenda. Commissioner Clark seconds it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those same sign. Agenda is approved. Now we'll do the consent agenda. So obviously, we've got fourteen items on the consent agenda now. I will ask for item E ten to be removed from the consent agenda. Anybody else have anything that they want to change?
Mr. Chair, just, I'd like to ask a couple of questions on E two, but I'm not sure. Me and Aaron, I don't know if anybody's here from emergency.
Yep, she is here. Why don't we pull, why don't we pull that, Steve, then, too?
Okay.
We'll pull E two and E ten, and then we'll talk about them in that order. So we'll have twelve items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'll move those items.
Okay. Commissioner Persky moves the consent agenda, the twelve items.
Second.
Commissioner Notch seconds him. Any further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those same sign. Okay, Aaron, Commissioner Notch, E two.
Yeah, just, I guess, maybe if you can kind of recap, you know, being the, it mentions Monticello Nuclear Power Plant. Are we doing this in conjunction with, is it Sherburne County, or?
Absolutely. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Erin Hughes from Emergency Management. Um, yes, for the last fifteen years or so, we have partnered with the state of Minnesota, who is responsible for the Radiological Emergency Preparedness Program that has many different phases. First and foremost is kind of the site area for Prairie Island and Monticello to have emergency plans. Then we take one step further out, and we work with surrounding counties like Stearns for reception centers. So in the event that something were to happen, we have to have a location for people to go to, to be checked out, to make sure that they weren't impacted, if they need housing or additional assistance. And Stearns County is one of those reception sites.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for being here, Erin.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'll move, I'll move E two for approval.
Motion's been moved to approve E, item E two on consent agenda. Commissioner Clark seconds it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. That item is approved. E ten, Mike, you just want to, I shared with you that I would ask for that to be pulled. You just want to share a little bit of the background on that, and then I'll share what my, I guess, concerns are, and others can weigh in.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a bit of a long history to this item. It was far back, well, even back further than two thousand and sixteen, but the most recent activity was in two thousand and sixteen, when the four counties, Wright, Sherburne, and Stearns, and Benton came together and created the Community Economic Development Strategy, if you recall. And we had the Central Minnesota Jobs and Training, CMJTS, Job Training, Serb, uh, I can't remember what the S is in the acronym, and created that SEDS. And we were proposing at that time that the CMJTS would be the administrator for becoming the EDA designated by the federal government, so federal EDA. At that time, that went into, even in the spring of two thousand and nineteen, actually fall of two thousand and nineteen, and at that time, the, the EDA said that they were not going to approve the CMJTS as the administrator. What the, what this designation will do to, for us eventually is it qualifies the counties, and more importantly, actually, the cities in, in the, in the region, to qualify for economic development grants. So grants for infrastructure, grants for workforce development, economic development type of activity. And we've been in this region without an EDA for years, which, which is, makes it more difficult for any communities to acquire these grants. The most recent activity, we engaged the Initiative Foundation, and they sort of facilitated, not sort of, they facilitated a process bringing the four counties together to create, hopefully create that EDA. The Initiative Foundation did obtain a grant, is for other items, but part of the, part of the grant funding is going to be used to facilitate this process and administer this process for about, for eighteen months, so that the, the counties would not have any financial obligation for at least eighteen months. At that time, then, if we're designated as an EDA, there would be, then the, then the federal EDA funds about half the, half the portion of a full-time position, roughly eighty thousand, and some of the administration, but they'll only fund half, so it'd be, the counties then would need to come up with approximately an eighty thousand dollar match. That can be done in a number of ways, cash or even in-kind services. Since all this has come together, Wright County has got, has chosen not to participate at this point, so it's the three remaining counties. The, the grant, and we titled this Initiative Foundation's grant application, it's really there just sponsoring it. So if we get the grant, the first thing that will happen is the three counties will create a governing body of the governance and create an entity that will be, come its own, its own entity, its own EDA, and the Initiative Foundation will be the, the fiscal agent and provide some of that administrative support. So this is somewhat of a, a next key step to establishing that EDA.
Okay. Can you share why Wright County did not approve it?
I, I, I was not able to attend the meeting when that was largely discussed, so I, I can't really, I can't answer that.
Can we find out?
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe share that with everybody. I guess my concern, I was sharing with Commissioner Clark before the meeting, as you've heard me say before, so much of this stuff is we raise the money, send it up, then they send it back down and say, okay, you can get your money back, but you have to do this, this, and this. And this is just another, in my opinion, another prime example of that. I'm torn because on the flip side of that, of course, if you don't do it, then the counties and cities that do do it, well, then they're going to be able to get the money, and we won't be able to. However, there's a lot, and for me, there's a lot of unknowns here. I don't get the United Nations stuff and everything else, that's way beyond me. We never, we never, they didn't teach that in Spring Hill, so I don't have a clue about that. That's way above my pay grade. But I do have concerns about another governing body. We're already kind of, yesterday with the airport meeting, which we'll talk about a little bit later, you know, we've already have so many of these joint power boards, and we have all these distribution, and it always seems like the eighty thousand, I asked Mike, and he did share that earlier, but in the report it wasn't in, how much are we anticipating the match to be? Because then we'll get the grant, and then the grant runs out, and then we're going to have to fund it. Of course, it seems like whenever we're in a joint powers agreement, Stearns always gets, holding the larger part of the bag. So the eighty thousand, even though it's shared by three counties now instead of four, will be holding the bag. The staff resources are going to come through Mike's office, and we're already stretched. So strings attached, top-down, you know, the, I don't know, I, I've just got, I'd like to know, I guess, a little more about this before we would approve it. So that's why I asked for it to be pulled. Anybody else have anything to share about that?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, I, I agree with you as far as maybe just holding off on moving it forward. But I recall it was back twenty eighteen, maybe even twenty seventeen, we, we had this process going on, and it took me about a year to figure out how it worked. And I was a bit puzzled about it, but yeah, let me just say that in, in some way, respects it, it's kind of the same way as the APO, in that if, if there's funding available for especially economically suppressed areas or developmental projects, maybe a sewer water project that's in, again, an economically just depressed area, you then qualify for, you can qualify for federal funding and support to get those things completed. However, you have to have a group like this in order to make those requests. So, yeah, by all means, let's, I, I very much support maybe taking a look at it a little bit more as far as what we're getting for our money. But it, it took me a while to understand the process, because it seemed like we weren't really moving anything forward locally until all of a sudden some federal money came available. And I do believe there was something, was, was it Zone B or Zone Z economically on the east side of St. Cloud? I think that eventually those zones developed and funds became available for redevelopment. And so there are monies out there to be had, but unless you have, you're a player in the game, you, you can't tap into those funds. So, yeah, as long as we get a return, I would, I would be in support of it, but I'd like to see that we can get a return.
And I, I guess, I didn't know Wright County did not approve it. That information would be helpful, because if they had a more in-depth conversation, or whatever conversation they had, that would be helpful for us, I think, to make a more informed decision. And the other concern is the Initiative Foundation part in this, is having a staff person paid by a grant that won't be totally dedicated to this, and they're going to have duties outside of this effort. Again, it, it is all a little bit, I just, I would feel more comfortable knowing more about it. Anybody else? Commissioner Notch?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Mike, did, a while back, you mentioned, I don't know if I'm saying this right, was it CEDS? Is that what you're?
SEDS, yeah, Community Economic Development Strategy.
And that, what was that?
That was the precursor to being able to be designated as an EDA. And so we went through that process, and I think Joe, or Commissioner Persky, you were part of that. And that's what you're recalling back in sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. And then since then, it's been updated as well. So we're in, we're, we're okay on that end of it with that, with that SEDS, which is, again, needs to be done before you get designated as an EDA.
And thanks for, and, and I guess I would be okay if, if we bring it back at the next meeting with clarifications that you've requested, Mr. Chair.
Maybe put it on the regular agenda if we, if it does get continued, but Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, and I think, you know, you and I've talked about this, obviously, you know, it's kind of frustrating when Minnesota sends more money to Washington than we get back. And it'd be great when they're making changes there, that they would just give our taxpayers their money back, but they don't. And this is, as you said, one of the ways that we get that. You know, we're the only, this is, I think, for others, we all know this, we're the only county in the state that has nine counties around us, and we have to do almost everything regionally, in part because of how many communities around our periphery are in more than one county. And so they, they require that. Part of what I'd be interested about Wright is Wright trying to go, I know they've, they've done some things towards the cities. Are they looking at doing something with this, with the different counties, when you're getting the information? But I'm fine with waiting till the next meeting.
Okay, and then maybe one issue, two, or information is, how many, I think you, I think you did talk about it in here, how many other areas throughout the state, how many are in existence? What's been their successes, concerns, you know, kind of that kind of stuff, probably?
Yeah, there's, most of the state is organized with RDOs or EDAs, and there's been a number of large, large grants, and smaller ones, too, but we can certainly note those for you. I think if the board wants more information on this, I would have someone from the Initiative Foundation, and Dan Weber from Sherburne County was kind of spearheaded this effort, and is also on the Initiative Board, come and, and give more answers, and maybe even give a presentation.
Makes sense.
And I'd like to kind of have a flow chart of, again, this is a little bit more convoluted, in my opinion. So you've got the Initiative Foundation, you've got this federal, I hate using acronyms, so I'm not going to say EDD, the Economic Development District, and then you're going to have this Joint Powers Board, kind of a flow chart of how this is going to look and operate, and then like, if a decision's made by the governing body, does it come back to the board? You know, those kinds of structural kind of thing. So Commissioner Notch?
I guess another question then would be, you know, when you create this multi-county Economic Development District, so, well, I guess this might be premature, maybe this would be a presentation thing, but if, if it covers infrastructure, and you take small town or free park needs to upgrade their wastewater, you know, is it based then on point system? You know, because the bigger communities are going to say, well, it's more effective, because you're covering more people, then all of a sudden, all your smaller communities are, you know, pushed back. And that might be the conversation for the presentation.
Well, and I, I assume all the questions we've raised, you'll share with who've ever presented, so that they can answer them, preferably before, that we can have some time to look at it. But that's a good point, Commissioner Notch. How do these cities access, especially the smaller ones? Who's going to assist them? And then, like you say, the point system, are the potentially larger cities going to be more apt to get that assistance than smaller cities? Or, you know, that, those are, and if you compare all the other districts throughout the state, some of that track record, we'll be able to see that, I think. Commissioner Persky?
I, I agree, because, again, some of the smaller cities would maybe be struggling with the economic development, but then also the, the housing as well. And we, you know, we've got the need for housing in those rural areas as well, but those communities maybe don't have the infrastructure to provide that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark?
Yeah, kind of, at least from my standpoint, and one last thing from me, is that we have not had something in a while. It has been really obvious, we're a pretty big gap in the, the state on this, and it, part of what is exciting to me is thinking about what could be, but I've got a lot of questions about what could be, and what does that look like? And you've had a couple of things, Commissioner Persky, you just brought up, I'm not even sure that in some places they deal with, like housing, but it'd be great to know, or how much ability do we have to help shape what's, what's done?
So I think the consensus is that we continue it, so a motion would be in order to continue this item.
Somewhat.
Okay, Commissioner Clark moves to continue E ten.
Second.
Commissioner Notch seconds it. Any further discussion? If you need any more direction from us, Mike, or questions on it before it comes back, certainly reach out to us. Seeing no more, oh, Commissioner Notch.
And Mr. Chair, Mike, it's the Little Falls Initiative Foundation that we work with, correct?
Yes, yeah, Central Minnesota, yes. And it's, it's fine, we have, we have time, we just need this in by the end of the month. So that's why I put it on this meeting, in case it got continued to the twenty-ninth, but we do want to take action on the twenty-ninth, one way or the other.
And I'm glad we did. You know, an item like this is appropriate to have on the regular agenda. I'm glad we polled it, discussed it, this is good discussion, get more questions. I assume Sherburne and Benton have not acted on this yet?
Let me think about that a minute. No, neither has yet, but they're considering it basically the same time we are.
Sure. Okay, so motions were made and seconded to continue item E ten. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those same sign, okay, the item is continued. Okay, our first item on the agenda is Jody Teich, County Highway Engineer, and several things.
Good morning, Commissioners.
If you didn't notice, by the way, she does have a tan, or she's more tanned than the last time we saw her. I always love embarrassing you. Now you're red and tanned, so.
My first item is F one, and it begins on page one eighteen of your agenda packets. I'm asking the board to provide a contingent contract award for SP zero seven three dash six oh two dash zero five zero, two reconstruction from the Sauk River, just south of Coal Spring, down to County Road one sixty-five. This is a federally funded project. We've had lots of action related to this project, primarily with utility relocation agreements. We opened bids on this contract on June twenty-sixth, and it's over five million dollars. The Office of Civil Rights needs to approve several things before they concur that we should award this contract. It's July, and we know we want to get going on construction as quickly as possible. And your next meeting is in three weeks. We're asking the board to do a contingent award to OMG Midwest with a bid of five million, nine hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and seven cents. That is about just under four point seven percent over the engineer's estimate. So that when we do get that concurrence from the Office of, MINDO's Office of Civil Rights, we need that award to be effective immediately that day, and therefore, construction can get started as quickly as possible.
Let's not forget the seven cents when we do this. Is this, is this typical, this review that has to occur?
On every federal project, the Office of Civil Rights has to concur with bid award. There's a disadvantaged business enterprise goal on this. I can't remember the exact percentage, but they review the contract submittals. And then any federal contract over five million dollars, a workforce plan, needs to be submitted by the contractor. OMG Midwest is very familiar with the whole process, and they've submitted everything in a timely manner, but it does take the Office of Civil Rights some time to review all those submittals.
Hopefully not too long.
That's another one of your, talk about.
Top-down. Okay, I think, oh, I think this is the first project that came in over the estimate this year.
Part of that, Mr. Chair, might be due to the timing of it. It's a lot of work to be done in a little bit of a shortened time period. We did have some delays on the federal approval processes, because we were waiting for a Corps of Engineers permit on this. So it is a little bit later of a bid opening for a project this size than we typically like to have. Our hands were a little bit tied, so that may have played into that cost increase.
And you couldn't help yourself but bring up the utility issue. I mean, I was hoping she'd ignore that, but I think she did that on purpose personally, but I'm not sure. Okay, so a motion would be in order to approve the bid contingent on the review?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
What's that?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I thought you said something else.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Notch, seconded by Commissioner Persky. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. I don't know if you're going to be leaving after the next item, if you can stick around, or I can email you, too.
Okay.
There is one thing that, related to that project, that I wanted to connect with. Okay, F two?
My next item, F two, I have Brian Gibson from the St. Cloud Area Planning Organization. He's the executive director. He's going to be helping me with this. I'll just introduce it, and then kind of let Brian take the floor. I'm asking the board to adopt a resolution supporting a St. Cloud Area Planning Organization cost-sharing arrangement for future St. Cloud Beltline Road project development costs. This was discussed by the APO's Policy Board, and there was a recommendation by the Technical Advisory Committee, which consists of planners and engineers in the APO planning area. So this item begins on page one twenty-one, I, there's a resolution on page one twenty-two, a memo from Brian on page one twenty-three, and he's going to give you a presentation here.
Thank you, Jody, thank you, Commissioners. As, uh, let's see, how do I advance? Click that. Okay. Somebody else is in control, that's all right. So we're here to talk about the Beltline Project. What is the Beltline? It's a circular arterial roadway designed to go kind of around the core, the most highly-developed part of the urban area, to help people get around a little bit more quickly, with less congestion, and hopefully less safety issues as well. Next slide, whoever is controlling. Thank you. Where does this come from? The origins go back at least to nineteen ninety-two, and St. Cloud did a comprehensive plan that reinforced, and, and the concept then was reinforced in subsequent comprehensive plans, and reinforced by the APO Transportation Plan. You'll note on the map that, you know, if you take out that circular roadway that goes around the urban area, we live in, we live in a place that's a little bit like a bicycle wheel. You have the, you have the hub in the middle, and all the spokes, all the roadways kind of go into that central area. So to get anywhere, you have to kind of, everybody kind of goes through the same part of town, the most highly-congested part of town, lots of accidents that happen there. So we have some crash problems at Highway fifteen and Highway twenty-three, et cetera, et cetera. So this is designed to sort of circumvent that area, to help people get around a little bit more quickly. Next slide. So purposes are roadway continuity and mobility, congestion reduction mitigation, accommodating growth in the future. And when we go out to the public, and we do often, and we say, what are your biggest transportation issues? We consistently hear, we want to be able to circumnavigate the urban core. Give us a way to get around town without going through that middle part where all of the congestion exists. Next slide.
Right, could, could you go back to that last one?
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, and, and you can see the blue line on the Mississippi there is the proposed bridge. And of course, we've been working on that for decades, and that obviously is a key component to this whole Beltway.
Yes, absolutely. Next slide. So when I, when I talk about a circumference, circumference road, a lot of people think about four ninety-four, six ninety-four in the Twin Cities. It's a natural thought process. That's not what we're talking about here, though. We're talking about a minor arterial roadway, posted speeds about forty to forty-five miles an hour. This picture is actually Thirty-third Street South in St. Cloud. That is part of the Beltline corridor, and so this is ultimately the concept that we're looking at. Not all parts of the Beltline would be built to this standard right away. Some, you, you want to accommodate, you know, wait, wait until growth requires you to build it out fully, but this is basically the concept for the Beltline. Next slide. Lots of data about what we think the impacts will be, the positive impacts we think that will occur with the Beltline versus not building the Beltline. I won't go through all of this data right now for, for purposes of time, but we can certainly talk about that if you like. Next slide. So important to understand that all roadway projects go through the same basic five-step development process. The first is planning and concept development. That's usually, that's where the APO lives, that's what we do, planning and concept development. Second is environmental assessment. Third is final design, and fourth is right-of-way acquisition, fifth is construction. Same five basic steps, Jody will vouch for me, for almost every roadway project that exists. Next slide. In two thousand and twenty-four, the APO Board set a goal of developing a region-wide agreement for cost-sharing on the future Beltline projects. Because the Beltline is seen as a regional asset, not specific to any one jurisdiction, and everybody will benefit, the thought was, we shall all be, you know, cost participating in that process. But the questions were, sorry, the questions were, which part of the project development process should be cost-shared? And how would the cost-sharing then be distributed among all of the APO members? So the APO Board requested that the Technical Advisory Committee provide a recommendation. Next slide. On August, August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, the TAC approved the following recommendations. And I'm sorry, I'm going to read this, because the details are important. So number one, the cost of the planning phase, the planning phase of any Beltline project would be cost-shared among all the jurisdictions according to the normal APO cost distribution formula. This is the way it exists now, so that's status quo. Number two, when federal or state funds are being used for a tier-one environmental impact statement, the local match costs would be shared among the jurisdictions with the implementing jurisdiction, the jurisdiction that's building the thing, paying fifty percent of the local match, and the other fifty percent being distributed. and the other fifty percent being distributed among the jurisdictions according to the normal APO cost distribution formula. Uh, and then for tier-two EISs and any other aspect of the project development. So final design, right-of-way, construction, those would all be the sole responsibility of the implementing jurisdiction, whoever's building the roadway. So the actual question is uh, what the heck is a tier-one EIS compared to a tier-two I, EIS? So tier-one EIS generally is a bit broader. You're still considering multiple alternatives. You haven't selected a final alignment, uh, but it does provide the foundation for future project level studies. A tier-two EIS is more detailed. Uh, you're focusing typically on one or a few alignments. It addresses site-specific details. Most importantly, at the end of a tier-two EIS process, you have thirty-five percent design plans and the federal government expects that if you're spending federal dollars, that you will make meaningful progress on that project, right? The federal government is essentially saying, we gave you money to build this thing. You said you were gonna build it. You have ten years or so to make some meaningful progress to actually get this thing done. Um, and so there's a clock that starts ticking at the end of a tier-two EIS process that does not occur at the end of a tier-one EIS process. Next slide. Okay, so uh, the TAC discussion, uh, there was a number of considerations. Consideration one is that um, if City A is developing a portion of the Beltline and Cities B, C, and D all contribute to the tier-two EIS, but then City A does not move forward with the development, and the federal government says, we want our money back. You said you were gonna build it. You didn't build it. We want our money back. Are Cities B, C, and D on the hook to help pay back the feds, right? So that was one of the important considerations. Number two, uh, design typically is a very local decision based on context and land use. Uh, typically, City A does not want Cities B, C, and D telling them how to design their facility. And then consideration three, uh, City A would pay fifty percent of the local match and its normal share of the other fifty percent. So here is a helpful graph, I hope. Uh, so note, you'll note that City A is on there twice. So City A is the implementing jurisdiction. They're paying the first fifty percent and they're paying that eight percent of the other fifty percent. That's their normal distribution. So being the implementing jurisdiction does not get you out of the other, paying your normal share of the other fifty percent. Next slide. So here graphically, and I, and you have this in front of you, is kind of uh the TAC recommendations. Again, planning is status quo, uh, according to the APO's normal distribution formula. Nothing changes there. For tier-one EISs, that becomes regional. This is only for Beltline projects. I wanna note that. Only for Beltline projects. Um, fifty percent from the implementing jurisdiction and then the other fifty percent from our normal cost distribution formula. For a tier-one EIS that does not include federal dollars or anything above that, tier-two EISs, final design, right-of-way, construction, that's all on the individual jurisdiction. There's no regional cost participation. The policy board approved this agreement on March thirteenth. Um, and then I'll note uh on the backside of the page, page I gave you, there is an example specific to Stearns County. So if we're, if we're talking about a one million dollar tier-one EIS, you assume eighty percent federal participation. That's eight hundred thousand federal. That leaves two hundred thousand local. Of that two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand would be paid by the implementing jurisdiction, assuming that's not Stearns County. And so Stearns County's uh cost participation to the APO is nine point six four percent in twenty twenty-four. And so the cost to you would be nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars. So the APO Board has approved this, but of course, they have no authority. They have to to obligate you to future, you know, spending dollars in the future. Uh, and so we're coming to you to ask you to pass this resolution uh to get, so everybody's on board and uh everybody is in agreement. And this is something that will, will live on uh into the future. Uh, of course, if Stearns County was the implementing jurisdiction, the cost share would then be that hundred thousand plus the nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars. So one hundred nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars. So um, not uh, well, I was gonna say, not a lot of money, but uh, that's not for me to decide. That's, that's uh for you to decide. But that's the proposal. Uh, I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
If I could add one thing to what you said, Brian, um, these costs are generally um invoiced to the county through our annual dues that the Highway Department budgets for. So for instance, if we knew that we had a study coming up, we would include that additional amount that we would get billed for dues from the APO um in our consultant budget. So generally, we're gonna know by the budgeting timeline if we're gonna be doing something like that in the following year. So it would, this all comes out of the Highway Department budget. Sorry.
Yep, good, good point.
I would be shocked if the public, more than one percent of the public understands this whole process. I was to, I was at two APO meetings. Commissioner Persky's our representative, but this is pretty involved. Uh, and just for the public's purpose, the APA, APO Board is made up of mostly, or is it entirely, elected officials from, what is it, the five, six cities? You might, why don't you explain that board?
Yep, so I, my boss is a board of twelve people. Um, elected officials from the three counties and the five cities. Uh, the five cities, over five thousand. So St. Cloud, Sauk, Rapids, Sartell, St. Joe, Wake Park. Um, and then um Metrobus, Ryan Daniels serves as the Metrobus representative. So he's the only non-elected uh member. And then Leesauk Township uh chooses to be a participating member as well, separate from the county, so.
So the board is made up, and again, for the public's purposes, uh, it's important that there are elected officials except for the one. Uh, and you meet monthly and you have other subcommittee discussions and everything else. So this is a very involved.
I, I feel like it. But uh, again, as I alluded to earlier comments, is that if we're, you're, you're going to tap into federal funds, you have to have an MPO or an APO, or you can't get those federal funds.
And explain that. What, what an MPO, again, for the public's purposes.
Yeah.
When we get in these acronyms, I feel sorry for everybody.
Area Planning Organization. So we've come together with the cities and the counties as an organization. And as an organization, we say, we have this need in this area for transportation projects. When there are grants let, uh, then we can, as individual cities or counties, we can apply for those dollars with the support to get them. And Brian, the amount is typically, we're getting what, maybe three to five million dollars a year? About, how much do we actually come out with?
That's, that's pretty typical. Between three and five million is what we're leveraging.
Yeah, which otherwise we wouldn't be able to get, so.
And I assume the implementing jurisdiction is the county that the project is, or the city that it's occurring.
Whoever is building that segment of the Beltline.
And obviously, some of these projects probably are overflow. They're going into more than one jurisdiction, but there's always one primary jurisdiction.
Correct.
And that's the implementing jurisdiction in your terminology.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Clark.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess a couple of questions. This won't be a surprise to Miss Teich. Um, could you just talk a little bit for the public, but also for us? I mean, Commissioner Persky does a great job on the APO. But for many people, they don't, there's a few questions I get asked all the time. One is, so what's the implementation timelines for some of this? Obviously, as Joe said, we've been advocating for the bridge for decades. So that's one question I get. Another one I get, or I, I also think of is both on the north and the south side, there's now a fair amount of development. Like, how quickly can we get through there? So the example would be in Sartell, so it doesn't end up being like what some of the, you know, fifteen, twenty-three, et cetera, are through St. Cloud. Um, and on the Sherburne County side, my understanding is that there is a rather assertive, aggressive, whatever words you wanna use, uh, gravel pit project. Like, how are we dealing with some of that? So I know you've been dealing with the environmental, but it's possible we could have the east side and the west side and then not the other pieces in a, in a fairly quick way. And it doesn't really work if we don't have this. So if you could just kind of address, how does this, I get that it's forty to forty-five miles an hour, but there are concerns about that and then timing.
Um, so the timing of any project honestly is a function of dollars, right?
I know.
You gotta have the money. Um, and so I'll answer your question about uh when will all of this occur by saying it depends upon when we can afford it, right? When the, when we can, when we can get the money to do it. Um, and so uh, I think Joe has been part of the, so first, I wanna make clear that the, the current Thirty-third Street Bridge going to US ten, that is not part of this agreement. This, that's a separate thing. But um, that's been going on for twenty years.
Oh, longer.
Um, yeah, so it's taken us that long to get to this point where we're just now starting the EIS uh for that. Because it's all very expensive and.
Well, and Mr. Chair, I mean, part of it is the environmental pieces. I mean, I was in the legislature when, so it was long, I mean, and it already been trying for thirty years. I mean, it's a long time in coming and so, but just with those, the Beltway and particularly Sartell, I mean, now that you're going right through the community, there's another bridge further north. Is there been any look, serious consideration of trying to have a real Beltway where you're not going through development?
Mr. Gibson.
Yeah, so um, it's, it's a, not uncommon question. I answer it this way. Um, what any roadway does is right? If you think about, okay, think about a soybean field.
Yep.
It's a soybean field, right? You put a road through the soybean field and suddenly it becomes ripe for development. Apartments, strip malls, whatever you want. So no matter where you build a roadway, development tends to follow. That's kind of the purpose, right? Roadways are economic development tools. Um, so if you look at other cities where, that follow this kind of strategy, typically um you'll end up with concentric rings, right? So it's, I, I get, I understand the point that uh right now, where we have drawn the, the Beltline through Sartell, kind of goes through the middle of Sartell. Um, if you go too far outside of Sartell, I think the next bridge to the north is Rice. Um, it'd be hard to justify spending tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars to build a Beltline in Rice that is just too far out. Um, you could build a new bridge somewhere between Rice and.
Which is not gonna.
Right, and so it's, right now, it's sort of the best alternative that we have and it's close enough in that it will get used, but it's still far enough outside of the core downtown area that it's gonna facilitate better traffic.
Mr. Chair, I, I get that these are hard decisions and they've been on the books for a while.
Yep.
The Sartell one feels very much like downtown St. Cloud to me, I mean, honestly. And then the, the one that's on the southern end, that's pretty residential and I even, I, I even hear about that. But you know what? There's not another good place to do it, right? We don't want a bridge that's outside.
Right.
I think for those of us who live in the immediate area, Clearwater's too far south already and that goes through their pieces, so. But it is a little tricky. Again, if you have the Benton County part done and you don't have kind of the north and south parts, it doesn't really work and that.
Well, I think for many of these, for many of these pieces, uh, you could, you could justify them as standalone projects. So for example, the bridge from Roosevelt Road and Thirty-third Street going to US ten, without any other piece of the Beltline, that will, that will draw traffic. That's gonna draw big traffic.
No, Mr. Chair, right.
Commissioner Clark.
Absolutely. And again, we haven't even gotten to the folks, the only kind of sort of know, even though this has been around for a long time.
Yeah.
About what it's gonna actually mean. And if you, as you well know, when you think about where are the places it's gonna go, it's planned to go across, so people are gonna wake up in a way that it isn't on the east or the west side of it, so. But, but the bridge part, yeah, I mean, and Commissioner Persky, I personally, I really appreciate your advocacy on that. I mean, we have to all, we all have to be working on getting that piece done. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, I assume all the entities have to approve this resolution.
Correct, and we have approvals from everyone except for Stearns County, uh, St. Cloud, and Sartell. But everyone else so far has approved.
Okay, Commissioner Notch.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So Brian, and then maybe this isn't an answerable question, but so each of the participating entities, you know, where this Beltway would go, do they, in their master plan, are phasing out any development so they don't have to buy properties to create this?
Uh, we certainly, we certainly hope so.
You know, 'cause otherwise it's to Terrell's point, you know, now you've built it all up. Now how do you accomplish it?
Yep.
Unless those cities say, hey, we're not gonna allow.
And so we, as, as the chair notes, uh, you know, my board is made up of elected representatives from all of those jurisdictions. The Technical Advisory Committee is made up of engineers and, and planning staff from all the jurisdictions. Jody is an opinion leader on the TAC. Um, and so we certainly hope as we go through this process that they are taking the message back to their jurisdiction and saying, wait, we're gonna do, you know, we're gonna do this major roadway project. We need to plan accordingly in terms of land use for that.
Might not hurt to remind them that once in a while. Really, I mean, you kind of know it, but maybe be reminded by it. Uh, email the administrators or even bringing it up at the meeting. That, that's a good point. By the way, thank you for making her blush a second time. I made her blush once when you said she was a leading tech person. She blushed again, so.
Actually, I think he said an opinionated leader. That's what I.
No, 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 no. Any further discussion?
If I could just um add one more thing, it um, these studies are so important because they do put these jurisdictions in a position where they can seek those outside revenues, the congressionally-directed spending. I think we all know that none of the agencies can do this with their existing revenues. And while I acknowledge there's, it's still taxpayer money. It's taxpayer money that's gonna go to somebody. And if we don't ask for it, it will just go to somebody else. So doing these studies and the APO helping with us get these studies to a point where we're, have thirty, where we have thirty-five percent plans, gets us to a point where we can much more aggressively seek those outside revenues.
And as much as it drives me nuts because it's such a slow process and so bureaucratic, it is very forthright thinking of, these projects are major. They're once-in-a-lifetime projects. They really do need to be well thought through and having the collaboration, obviously. And I was, I, I've always been impressed that Leesauk Township has chosen to uh be a part of that because again, townships typically don't do that. Uh, again, the more collaboration we can have, the better use of the money and better planning, but it takes more time. So, um, any further discussion? If not, a motion would be in order to adopt the resolution supporting cost-sharing agreement.
So moved.
Commissioner Clark moves it.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Persky seconds it. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, next item is property services. Chad Martini. Um, we won't open the public hearing right away. We'll do an overview and then when we do, Mike, you can uh state uh the legal requirements for the public hearing.
Why don't I begin that now?
Or should you do that now?
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Got it.
Um, so for this item, um, the board is meeting as the Stearns County Drainage Authority. And the purpose of the meeting is to receive comments and testimony from anybody interested in the petition for abandonment of the Stearns County ditch thirty-five. And just to note, this is an evidentiary proceeding and the meeting is being recorded as always. And so how we're gonna do this is Mr. Martini, our property services director, he's gonna show that we've complied with the, with the Drainage Authority's notice requirements to conduct the hearing. And he's gonna present some more information pertaining, pertaining to the petition. Um, and after that, uh, the, the petitioners will be, have an opportunity to present the petition and discuss uh their thoughts about the proposal. And then finally, um, you would have a, you would hear any other interested people's comments on the abandonment position. Excuse me, if you'd like to make a comment when the public comment period is opened, um, people in the audience, please come forward when the chair recognizes you and state your name and address for the record. If you have a specific question concerning the proceedings, uh, rather than comments, uh, we will probably ask Mr. Martini to respond to that. Um, and uh, I don't know that we have any written comments at this point.
We do not.
Um, but um, if, if someone did have written comments, they could submit them at this time. So, um, Mr. Chair, if, if there's questions or comments from the board members, you can do that now. But I think then you can open the public hearing um and have Chad uh begin the explanations.
Okay, Chad, why don't you just follow that up and then we'll open up the public hearing. Anything you wanna add to that?
Um, we are on packet page one hundred and fifty and I am here today. I am obligated in conjunction with the auditor to bring a property owner petition to the Drainage Authority to consider abandonment of County Ditch Thirty-five. I apologize for some of the legal requirements that I'm obligated to go through today, but I will get through it as quickly as I can. Uh, with that, Mr. Chair, uh, if you are ready, we can open the public hearing and I can kick us off.
I know you said you're obligated to be here, but you really like being here too, though.
Oh, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't.
Oh.
Uh, I think this is the first time we've convened as a ditch authority since I've been on the board, or have we before, and I forgot.
Generally, anytime I show up, you're talking to me as the Drainage Authority.
I mean, some counties, just for the public. I mean, some counties, just for the public purposes, I mean, the southern counties, especially Benton County, they're constantly dealing with these issues. And water creates a lot of angst.
Especially in June of 2025.
Yep. So, so we'll open the public hearing prescribed by Mike and Chad. Anybody here from the public wishing to address the board?
Mr. Chair, if I could go through a couple of things before we get to our public part, I'd appreciate it. So the first matter of state statute is the notice requirements. So we are obligated to advertise in our county paper of choice for three successive weeks. I am entering an affidavit of publication from the cold spring record into the, the drainage record today. Any questions from the Drainage Authority about the notification process?
Down to the notification, you literally have to post it and tape it on the wall and everything else like you do or don't you?
I don't have to post on the wall. I believe the auditor does post these in a, in a spot in the county.
We do post them and remember, there's a very small audience here and they all have signed the petition, right? So certainly we have to go through the process.
Just interesting again for the public, the process and legitimately so. I mean, there's some situations like this that aren't as small and aren't as unified. So that's why that process is laid out, but certainly very bureaucratic, but.
Well, and a lot of the drainage law we follow today predates statehood. So, you know, some of it, if it seems somewhat odd in 2025, it's because it is. So the next part is examination of the petition. So the auditor's office received a petition from property owners on May 12th, 2025. The petition was signed, there are five prop, benefited property owners of County Ditch 35. Four of those properties, we received signatures on the original petition. I've since received the last signatures representing the last property. So 100% of the benefited property owners have signed the petition that I'm presenting today. The petition is valid. We, we prepared as a property services group working with the auditor, the petition template for the property owners in conjunction with Rinky Noonan to ensure that all properties were properly and duly represented when the property owner went out to get signatures. So we have a valid petition. 100% of the property owners, to our knowledge, have signed it. Any questions about the petition, which is posted in the back of the room? And I should say, if there is anybody here in the public for County Ditch 35, there is an agenda for this proceeding on the back table as well. Questions from the Drainage Authority about the petition?
The only thing that you said was to the, to our knowledge. I mean, you'd know if these are all the property owners or not.
It sometimes gets hard when you get into trusts, you know, especially on some of these family farms. You know, we have no idea how many family members or interested parties may be on there. But we do validate for those signatories who might be, I don't know how to use the right legal term, but the lead trustee, for example. But that is the very reason we have a public hearing. So, you know, if there is a voice out there that, you know, has concerns or objections, that they can be heard today.
And some of these have obviously spouses, some do not have spouse signatures, so that plays into it as well, I assume.
Yeah, it's all how the land records and the deed are prepared when land is transacted.
Okay, don't see anything.
All right, so at this point, Mr. Chair, if you would, you can certainly ask if there are any members of the petitioners here today that would like to comment and support the petition. I, I did talk to the lead petitioner yesterday. I'm not aware that anybody's here, but Mr. Chair, if you wish to ask if any petitioners wish to speak at this time, it would be appropriate.
What he says, anybody here? Petitioners? Don't see anybody.
Moving on then, we get into now, we are at the point where, Mr. Chair, if you would like to ask for public comment from any members of the public. Statutorily, by state law, it's important to distinguish that to have legal standing to object to the proceeding we're talking about today, you must be somebody that is being assessed benefits by County Ditch 35. So if somebody from SOC Center can't show up and, I mean, anybody can talk, it's a public hearing. But in terms of legal standing, in terms of how we proceed, but any members of the public, Mr. Chair, we can certainly ask for their comments at this time.
Okay, anybody here from the public on this? Don't see that.
Moving on, now I get to the part where I have to get into the legal mumbo jumbo. So we are at a point now where the board can deliberate the petition and discuss if you wish to grant the property owners wish to abandon County Ditch 35. So the first question deals with the original construction and the liens that would have been taken out, taken out in 1915. And if those are all paid, we're basically getting at, does the ditch system have any outstanding bills we need to address? It does not, but I posed the question to the Drainage Authority. Has the period originally fixed or subsequently extended to pay the assessment of CD 35 drainage liens expired? It has, but I'm obligated by law to ask the Drainage Authority if anybody objects.
I see no objection.
Moving on. Is the abandonment petition signed by at least 51% of the property owners assessed for the construction of CD 35? Or by the owners of not less than 51% of the area of the property assessed for the drainage system? As I mentioned earlier, 100% of the benefited property owners have signed the petition. So that is an affirmative, but again, I'm obligated to ask the Drainage Authority if there's any objections to that statement.
I see no objection.
All right, number three.
You're on a roll. Keep it going, Chad.
Does the petition designate CD 35 as the drainage system proposed to be abandoned? And show that the drainage system is not of public benefit and utility? I can confirm in conjunction with our legal counsel and review by the auditor that that is in fact true. The petition does cover those legal points. We are talking about CD 35. Does any member of the Drainage Authority object or have comment?
I see none.
Now we're to the fun part. Is the abandonment petition significant for the purposes of this abandoned proceeding? I am asking the board if they have any comments or questions before we move into the next series of questions. So I'm going to help you a little bit with this one. Actually, you don't need help. The abandonment is quite, the petition's quite significant. Any questions or comments again about the petition?
I see none. Oh, Commissioner Persky.
Yeah, Chad, this is the first abandonment I've seen on a ditch, okay?
It might be the first abandonment anybody's ever seen.
Okay, is there any potential liability for the county to come back that we had done something wrong by abandoning this? So one, one of the farmers gets flooding into his field and now he says, will you abandon this ditch? But they were in agreement to abandon it, correct? So is there any potential future liability for us?
Two-part answer. The first is there is a 60-day appeal period after action's taken today, if action is taken today. Secondly, legally, once the drainage system is abandoned, all rights are forfeited. So the Drainage Authority at that point has granted the property owner's wish and desire. And so I can't, anybody can sue anybody, but that's one of the reasons you're hearing me be so obnoxious about these questions going through it is for the purpose of protecting Stearns County's Drainage Authority from a future liability.
Okay, and then again.
Commissioner Persky.
First time I've seen something like this. What would be the benefit actually of abandoning a ditch in that there's so much, this is all around ag territory, ag country? And they would want that area to drain, okay? Why would they want to abandon the ditch to give potential, again, flooding?
So in this particular situation, the original ditch was 18-inch clay tile. It's a single tile through this land. What's since happened in modern farming techniques, it's all been pattern tiled. Instead of water naturally flowing south, I've been told it's all being pattern tiled to run north. The remaining open ditch, that property owner would like to see the ditch abandoned because he wants to tile that and cover it so he can farm over it instead of driving around it.
Got it, okay.
So part of it is just the antique of the original County Ditch 35. It just simply doesn't, like a lot of our ditches, doesn't handle water in 2025 very well.
Okay.
Next one, does the drainage system serve any useful purposes to any affected property? So what I'm asking the Drainage Authority, do you have any reason to think that the ditch provides a purpose? Essentially, do you think it provides a purpose? Do you know something that maybe our five petitioners who live and work the land don't know?
I don't think so.
Not hearing anything? Is CD 35 of public benefit and utility? This speaks to, some of our drainage systems go through municipal areas, some of them go through residential areas. I can tell you CD 35 starts on private property, ends on private property. It does not dump into any named or public waters that we've identified. It's quite small and quite self-contained. So Drainage Authority, anybody feel that CD 35 is of public benefit and utility?
Where does it dump into?
Another private ditch. So it's just, if you look at a map, it looks random for the viewing public. I did post maps in the back of the room if anybody wishes to know where this is. And I should have said it's in Ashley Township, right smack dab in the middle.
So the, and we have a map on that, thank you. So I don't see any, any.
No.
Next question.
This concludes the board's deliberation. Based on the board's deliberation, I believe it would be appropriate at this time to entertain a motion on the petition. And I actually have something here for you. So I handed out earlier and I did.
Do we close the public hearing before we take the action?
Yeah.
So again, there's nobody here from the public hearing, for the public hearing, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Now we'll do your deal, Chad.
So I may suggest to the chair and the Drainage Authority that we are looking for a motion granting the petition by adopting the draft findings and order, which I placed in the back of the room. I handed each of you a copy of the, the draft findings and order were prepared by our attorneys at Rinky Noonan. And essentially is a summary in legal detail of everything we've discussed today. So again, looking for a motion granting the petition by adopting the draft findings and order.
I'm just curious, does the county attorney's office review what Rinky Noonan does or?
Typically not because the county's attorney's office actually, long time ago, helped us work with Rinky Noonan for the express purpose of not having to use their resources on a very niche legal area that somebody else has more expertise in.
Okay, so looking for a motion.
So moving, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Notch moves that. Commissioner Clark seconds it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, now those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I appreciate your patience. We have now entered the 60-day appeal period. You should not hear anything more from me on County Ditch 35 unless an appeal does arise. So I thank you for your patience as I worked through the legal things I was supposed to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It wasn't as painful as it could have been, so thank you for that. With that, we're at the point of issues by commissioners. So Commissioner Clark, you want to start?
Yeah, a couple of items, I guess, kind of national impact, but are local. One is just thinking about and holding up in prayer the flooding victims and their families, their communities, their first responders in Texas. Very hard stuff and the connection is very thankful for what Minnesota and our county, our neighbor counties and our communities do because we do have systems in place, so just want to hold that up. And then in conjunction with the association of municipalities and with MICA, the inter-county association, there continues to be work by our, particularly our great staff on trying to help translate what the bill that passed last week might mean for our residents, particularly with Medicaid and with SNAP and potentially our property taxpayers. So we're just going to have to keep working on what some solutions will be. This is going to be pretty challenging and appreciate both Congressman Emmer and Congressman Fishbox offices for being willing to listen and understand that we're one of 10 states where the counties administer these programs. So there's, are some big workforce issues, big potential property tax implications and then our folks. And saying this out loud for the public, but also because it happened to be in a meeting I was in yesterday, that we'll just need to keep reminding them that we are one of those states and to, with some of the legislation that could be coming next to help work with us, either give us time to figure this out in technology or perhaps reconsider a few of these pieces. But it, it's really a delay right now that's being sought. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Notch.
So, Mr. Chair, can I ask Commissioner Clark a question?
I don't know. Let's think about that. We, I'm kidding.
So when you say we're one of 10 that administers human services programs?
Yes, we are.
Instead of a state?
Correct.
Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it is a lot of population because places like California are in it. But we are one of the ones that have traditionally, some other states have taken over it. And there are questions about whether or not counties in Minnesota are able to sustain this if the funds really, for these mandated services really aren't coming back. But the, my understanding, there's others who, you know, our staff that could speak even more to this. Part of the reason why this has happened over time is because we're closest to the people. But yeah, it's a big, it's both an opportunity and a big burden if the feds and the state don't hold up to their parts.
So is there a process to go through to switch it?
Potentially, I think that's something together with our associations. We have to really be looking. The legis, yes, the legislature would need to. But yeah, so you might recall, and Mr. Chair, if it's okay. When the governor's proposed coughships, particularly on some of the waivers for people with developmental disabilities among others. He was proposing the state stop paying for part of it and pushing it, thinking, saying that, oh, maybe the counties can figure out how to make this costless without changing any of the mandates, which really practically means we would be pushed into property tax increases, not better services for anybody, but, but, but that. And so I think we're going to see a number of places where there's really going to be ongoing conversations about how do we really do this? What does it mean, you know? And to your question, I mean, if the state actually was working with us better on technology instead of spending years banging our head against the wall, some of these could perhaps be delivered in a more streamlined and cost-effective way, but not some of these services. So yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of commerce, continue to be maybe even more heightened ones, particularly for some of our most rural counties. It's really hard.
Thanks.
Any issues, Commissioner Clark, I mean, Notch?
Mr. Chair, I was just going to, just picked this up yesterday a little bit and I don't know if it's something we'd consider. But if you, Benton County mentioned that they always do, go around to the commissioners for the committees they're on and do reports. That be something, would be beneficial to anybody's thing?
I, I picked.
I mean, it's something we can ponder.
Yeah, I picked up on that too. I think, I, I, I don't know that we need to go through each of our committees, but we should maybe just mentally note that maybe, maybe do three a month or something, that the highlights of some of the things that we're on that you might want to know, like, like the library, for example. I haven't heard nothing about the library, other than what we get directly from the library.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like a library update, I'd be happy to do, but that actually is what I was just doing. This is part of the AMC, part of the AMC work or the MICA work that.
And I know they operate a little different because they have work sessions every other Tuesday or whatever. So that maybe when they do that, I'm not sure.
I, I certainly don't think, we did that on the council all the time. I don't think it would hurt. So I don't know how we do that if we just do it, you know, amongst ourselves or if we kind of have that as an item, I'm not sure. But, and maybe we don't need to do all of them every, every meeting or every month. But maybe do like a third, a third, a third or something of each of the. So maybe that would take a little bit of coordination to kind of know which three are we going to touch on for each of us. Maybe you can just do a spreadsheet or something, Mike, and say, let's talk about these. And then of course, several of them, there's more than one of us on the committees. So then you could decide. So then you could decide which one of, which, we could decide which ones of us are gonna do it.
And Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Clark.
To that point, I mean, there, there are some other counties that do this too. They do it like in 10 minutes. So people would have to be very short. And they do this instead of issues by commissioner. So that's one of the other things for us to think about. And that's, I don't know about Benton, but there's some other places that what they're really doing is doing a report back to their colleagues about some of the things they've been working on since the last meeting. So another thing.
Mike can think about it, maybe he has some ideas how to, how to facilitate that. But I don't think that's a, I think that's a good idea. Anything else?
Nope, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Pereski?
Uh, just a couple of things. First of all, Commissioner Clark and I will be heading to Philadelphia later this week. Uh, and we'll be attending the NAOC conference there through next Tuesday. Uh, and I'll be particularly interested in transportation and see where some of those bigger picture funding dollars might be and what that might hold for the future with some of the things we've got going on. And then also relating that back to the APO, we're having Brian Gibson present today. I appreciate the support you folks gave for the APO and for moving that progress forward. Uh, you know, big picture, counties, you know, we share this community. We share, you know, the metro area, Sock Rapids, St. Cloud, Way Park, Sartell, St. Joe. Oftentimes, there, there are no boundaries for the people's lives. You know, you work in one community, you live in another community, you worship in another community, you shop in another community, and so rather than competing with each other, working together really helps everybody. So I, I just appreciate the support on that, so thanks.
Okay, uh, just a couple of things. One, I appreciate the discussion that we had on the consent agenda item. We can have a open discussion. Uh, we take an item off, we have the discussion, we agree the best is to have more information. We can work through those things and, which also makes me think of environmental services. We're gonna go to a work session on that. Uh, there was three items on the consent agendas. No issues with the planning commission process, no issues with us accepting that. So it does work overall. And again, sometimes, I said yesterday, uh, we find what we look for. And, you know, when it works, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just have to continue to work towards making it work. And so just for whatever it's worth, the Justice Center process, I've shared with Mike. Uh, you know, I just get a little nervous if we push too much of this off too far, because we definitely still have to have some deep discussions. Um, so just for what it's worth, I think we need to, I think we need to start that discussion a little bit more at a deeper level. Mike shared a good memo, uh, on the airport. Uh, we had the meeting yesterday, so, um, we all got, uh, for those, for the public, uh, we've devised a subcommittee to meet with Benton County. Sherburne decided not to join us. And us to kind of, uh, identify what some of our concerns are, how this all started was. We belong to an airport, uh, the, we're financially obligated to an airport commission. They tried to do a million-dollar levy, kind of without any notice and everything, which got everybody's attention, got everybody excited. And so because of that, they pulled that, and now we're having a discussion of how do we move forward? What do we do? And so I think both meetings were very productive. Good dialogue between the airport, uh, the Chair and the Executive Director, Brian Myers and Bill Toll, and then Commissioner Notch and I, Commissioner Pop and Tepinski, and Mike and Monte from the county administrators were there. So the next step now will be to have Sherburne come up with a subcommittee and the city of St. Cloud, and then we'll have a larger meeting with all those entities. And Mike's memo explained some of that stuff. And then I haven't heard nothing about the fair. Do we have any updates?
Actually, you're, you're gonna receive a sign-up sheet for yourselves after the meeting today. Plans are going along fine, similar to last year. We're planning things similar to last year, although using a little more technology to present information rather than all the paper that's blowing around in, in, in the wind in that building. So I think, I think we have a, a good plan. So you'll get a sign-up sheet, and if you want more information, we'll, we'll be developing that. But I don't know that we've met with members of the fair board yet, but we were planning that.
And department directors are gonna be there and staff are gonna be there.
Yeah, very similar.
Remember the first year that I was on the board? And when I went, I think there was like four staff people there during the entire fair. So only last year, we were well represented, and that engagement's extremely important. So, uh, but anyway, I hadn't heard anything.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nope, that's it.
I was just gonna, if I could, Mr. Chair, give you a quick update on the broadband project, because I know I sent you written information that the BEAT program was all changed by the federal government. Nobody really knew what was gonna happen. The state is working through that process and, um, it sounds like most applications that were submitted are, are gonna be able to be resubmitted. So if you recall, we had a project in Collegeville Township that, that the board approved supporting with $150,000 of our project. And then we had that other large project by, by, that you approved, some financial contribution to, from Vibrant or Meeker Electric. And that was in Fairhaven, Main Prairie, Eden Valley, and some part of Rockville and part of St. Augusta. Not, not participants in our program, but we've, we've, we've been successful with all participants. So then you approved participation in that. Both, both Arbig and Meeker Electric have told me that they're gonna resubmit those applications. So hopefully, and, and we still should know, we won't, won't know until fall, they're saying September, um, about awards there. So we'll just continue to, I don't think the board needs to take any action, because you already did. Um, just because it's a new process, I don't think the board needs to take any action. But I just wanted to make sure you knew that those were still planning to go forward.
Nothing's ever easy, is it?
No.
Just when we thought it was home sailing, here we are. Um, okay, uh, so help me, do we adjourn this meeting to go into the work session? Okay, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, take a five-minute break, and then we're going to convene a work session on environmental services.
Just stay the days.
So the meeting's adjourned?